I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello?
Hello?
Okay, you are on speakerphone and your mic. So behave.
I'm on my way.
We just made a pledge, Carl. And now I'm going to let everyone know that we are moving items A and B from our ordinance section. And that is the only changes I have to the agenda. So if anyone wants to make a motion with changes, with the changes, I'd appreciate it. I'll make that motion. Speaking to your mics. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
There we go. All right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
You're agreeing to the agenda, correct, Carl?
Yes.
Okay, I will delay more after. Okay. Moving on to amendments from August 17th.
I'll second it.
Here, I seconded. The Anne abstained. I am who made the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? All right. Amendments are approved. Bills in between?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Current claims?
I have a change to the current claim. In each of your packets, the current claims were changed, decreased by $150 as a result of the negotiated night security bill. So the total of your current claims is $82,025.23.
Any discussion?
What page is that on?
No, it's not.
It's not on here at all?
It is on there. It's just a decrease of the bill that listed on here at $1 amount. Sorry, I have to look for the page.
It's toward the back. It's on page 10.
Thank you, Caroline.
One, two, three, four, five from the bottom.
Do you have a motion?
I don't think I do. I think we're just...
I'll second it.
Okay, and so, Misty, the change was with current claims?
Yes.
Okay, so now we're discussing current claims. If anybody has any questions about that, or did you, Caroline, did you have an answer? You didn't, okay. So now we can discuss it, and Misty, is there... I didn't hear the question.
I don't think there was a question.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
We already got that.
We already did.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried, and that is on current claims. All right, credit cards.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, Peter Bills, I do not have anyone requesting communications from the public. Is there anyone here that does have a communication from the public? Do we have a mic out there?
Yeah.
If you have it, it's out here. Oh, back there, okay. We'll bring you in the dark. Please state your name.
I will. My name is Barb Walter, and I have a couple of concerns. Since I've been working down at Welcome Park across from Evans Plunge, a lot of visitors have stopped me and asked questions, and from my understanding of their questions, they have been considering moving to Hot Springs. But they're really concerned with all the businesses closed in the middle of the afternoon. They're concerned with not any jobs, especially in the wintertime, and the cost of rent, and the prices at restaurants, especially for families. So I thought I'd just bring those things up that maybe somehow can be considered or done something with.
Carl, could you tell me the first concern? I didn't get it.
I can't hear you.
Just please speak into your mic.
The first concern you had on there.
Could you say the first concern? I missed that.
Oh, that was jobs. And the other one has to do with the Evans Plunge.
That's what I was expecting.
Well, I thought I'd take that one first so that you could concentrate on what I'm saying now. I thought a long, long time on these hours, and I've kind of changed my mind about... I think that what we need to do, I'm agreeing with being open full days and closing the two, but Tuesday and Thursday, from what I had thought of before. And I wrote down the reasons so that people could understand why I changed my mind. And the first thing is that with being open all day part of the time, we would have no confusion in hours. Everybody would understand, you know, that we're open or we're closed on Tuesday and Thursdays. The schools wouldn't get confused, the tourists wouldn't get confused, and the residents in public wouldn't get confused. And the observation also that I've had for the last few days, being down at the park, is that there are a lot of people coming into the plunge between 11:00 and 4:00. There was a constant flow today, you know, but if the marketing is done properly, I don't see that Tuesday and Thursday is going to be a problem if that's done properly. And the other thing I have a concern with is our weather does not get cold until way into October. And I think the winter hours should start later than September because there were a lot of people down there the last couple of days, and I've been down in that park, and I was down there over the holiday, you know, and at the park, and that, Evans Plunge was swamped, and so was Monday. And that's when most, a lot of those other people were asking me, "Why is so, all the restaurants closed?", you know, and stuff, so... I go for the two-day closing, keeping the full days the rest of the week, and starting at least October 1st to abide by our weather and the tourists that come. A lot of tourists that don't have kids come after all the kids are back in school, and we're closing when they're here. So that's my thoughts on it.
Thank you for being an ambassador for Hot Springs. I know you've been working very hard there, and it doesn't go unnoticed. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Is it time now to speak about Evans Plunge?
Well, it's actually later in our agenda.
That's what I thought. I will wait. Go ahead.
While you were there, but, okay, thank you.
No, you need to do your agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, my name is Perry Holmes. From here in Hot Springs. Just got to bend over here. Can't bend. I'm one of those people that voted for the plunge to be bought by the city, as one of those people that have wanted the Hot Springs to have a city open year-round rather than closed on Tuesdays and Thursdays. We've been able to have motels and restaurants and other places stay open. When the plunge is open, you have, you want to have more, the more things you have for people to come to, the more people that are going to come and stay. But if they come here on Tuesday and the plunge is closed, they're going to be gone. These are tourist people. They do not come here. They're not local people necessarily, so they can't look at any agenda. When the plunge was closed before, I live on top of the hill, and I'd come down that hill, and I'd see people from California, I'd see people from all over the country looking at the sign saying "closed". And then there's other places in town that are closed too because people don't have things to do. Winkay Park is not closed, the Mammoth Side is not closed during any days. If you close it, you're going to have people not staying here, you're going to be closing our town again for another period of time with one last thing for people to do when they come here. So when you close something down that's owned by the city and used by people, also our swimming team and other people use the plunge on a daily basis, I do, many other people do use it, and if you're starting to close it down, it's a reason why people not to come to Hot Springs. Thank you.
Thank you, Perry. Did you want to follow up since this seems to be the topic for communications from the public?
I'm representing myself, I'm Bonnie Bernard, but I'm also representing Gary Franchu, who wrote a letter, and so I will start with my own concerns. I know that I have visited with several doctors in camp before, and being so arthritic, I said, "Why aren't you helping promote the plunge?". They said, "Well, you know, you never know when you're open. You close, you open, you have different hours. Doctors will not be able to promote us." And, you know, we talk about the minerals being so healthy, then we need their support. And I think that we need to look at that as an option. My other concern is, I bought membership along with many, many other people. How are you going to reimburse us for being closed on Tuesdays and Thursdays? You want that nightmare, to open up that kettle of fish and have to re, you know, submit cash capital out? I would think you'd have to. The other thing that I was concerned about is that there are talks of different hours, maybe opening noon to 4:00, and then closing on Tuesdays, and this and that. I think that once you start that game, then everybody gets confused, and nobody knows who's on first and what's on second. I live in the country, I live out by Inglestora Lake. I come in and I do swim. When I'm here, I buy my groceries. A lot of times after our exercising class, we go out for breakfast. So this will hurt some of the businesses a little bit with closing. And then I'm going to read Gary's letter, and if you feel it's getting too long, interrupt me and I'll get high points. He couldn't be here tonight. Oops.
Can you, can you get high points? Normally communications from the public are, I forget the amount of time, but...
And Bonnie, just so you do know, we did get a copy of Gary's letter in our packet
Oh, good.
For council to review.
Okay.
I didn't get a copy. The sorry, always...
One of the things that Gary brings forth is, he says as a former athletic club owner and manager, "I can tell you that the perception and images are very important, and by closing two days a week, you will be hurting that image and upsetting tourists who have traveled far and happen to be here on those days." The image here is what is important. Split hours or shifts sound really bad, whereas normal winter hours, although shorter, and the plunge offering to accommodate its members by allowing them early morning access, sounds like you are giving them something, not taking something away. What he basically is saying there is that he feels that maybe closing one day a week and then shortening the hours. So I think that's about as good as I can do for Gary so that you guys can go on. You've got the letter. Just another opinion.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Hi, Donna Steinke, and I'd like to thank you or say that I was pleased to see that you're encouraging the young people to read and promoting, or it's good PR for the plunge, and I like that. I was wondering how you're doing on Silver Sneakers.
If I can get your information after the meeting, I'll follow up with you personally to keep you updated on our Silver Sneakers program.
They're just lining up behind you, Jeannie, that's why I'm not calling on you, just so you know.
Excuse me? Yeah, I'd like to comment on closing the plunge Tuesdays and Thursdays. I think for one thing, I think it's going to cost you your membership. I think there's going to be people that won't renew their membership. There's a number of contributing members who contribute an extra $500 above their membership. I think you're going to lose some of them. And I think a tourist, if you have any tourists that show up and you're closed, they probably won't be coming back again.
Can you state your name, please?
Glenn Reiser.
Thank you.
27828 Forest Road, Hot Springs. And I guess that, I, I've seen it happen when the, it was privately owned, they started cutting hours, they were opening later, they started losing members, then they was, they closed two days a week, they lost more members, and then when they closed during the wintertime, there was, I don't know, there was very few memberships left, so I think, I think through proper marketing, I think that the plunge could possibly break even or even make some money. And I'd like to see you pursue that instead of closing the two days during the winter. So thank you. I think another thing, too, I think that you're leaving on the table in the summertime, not opening on Saturday till 10:00, and Sunday 11:00. I think you're losing some revenue during the summer by doing that, too. I think if you'd opened at 8:00, I think you'd, you know, sell some more tickets, so thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your input.
Jeannie Montgomery, Hot Springs. Well, first of all, I want to congratulate the council and the city of Hot Springs for setting up such a well-organized council meeting. This makes sense to me, and I really appreciate it. Thank you. The second thing is about the Evans Plunge. From hotel and personal experience, I got to ask the council, the reason why closing it is because of revenue? Do you have anything you can show us that shows each month's revenue?
Absolutely.
And what is the reason? Why would you want to close the doors unless it's about revenue?
It's financial, it's a financial decision, yes.
It's, so it is financially...
A lack of revenue.
Lack of revenue in the wintertime primarily, is that it?
That's my understanding from the committee, yes.
Okay. I voted to the city to buy these wonderful waters, so from my perspective then, and I'm trying to go from a tourism perspective, I, I think the city, the people of Hot Springs need to compromise because if, for any reason, it gets to the point where it's real touch and go, we got to compromise to save it in the city. And so I really want, first of all, some compromising to go on with all of us and work together on it. Second thing, from a tourist's point of view, I agree with the gentleman who said, "These tourists come here and have no idea." We have experienced that firsthand. We're not sure if the plunge is open or not. Let's go to the website and look. The website back then was horrible, just awful. We couldn't make heads or tails out of it. So number one is marketing properly and making sure whatever message you give states, there are certain brand names, that is a faddish name now, that has to be there all the time, and that is ours and price. And them are two important things, and I'm sure I don't have to tell a lot of you, but I do think a lot of our public needs to hear that. We need to start educating about that marketing. Second of all, the compromising is a tourist city population. So we got to put that together at the table. What I want may not necessarily be good for the whole of Hot Springs, okay? If you split them hours, we are not going to get tourists there. Done deal. If you split them hours, you're going to be favoring some people in Hot Springs and not others. So seven days a week is important. Holding back on the hours, if that's a compromise, then we need to really support you in that with good decision-making. The next thing is, is that I just became a member again, and I, I'm really relishing the swimming and doing this, and I want to help you, whatever kind of help you need that might be, that I can help. I'm not all-round resourceful, but please consider me to help support this Evans Plunge. It's just vital that people that come on holidays, close it on holidays, but drown, drink, round them holidays, get it open. We have many families that that's exactly where they want to take their kids and grandkids. So I, I think I have a lot of ideas. I think it's important for the swim team to get there. Them, that's the future generations of Hot Springs. There's many things I just want to tell you, so please, I want to be involved in it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeannie. Bob, were you in line now?
My name is Bob Paul, I'm from Hot Springs. Not so long ago, I watched you folks agonize over the budget, and part of the budget was Evans Plunge. Just for the record, for the, you folks had voted for the plunge. That's fine. I myself voted against. The election is over. We've got the plunge. The best way to make the plunge, make a go of it, is you folks that are supporters, get your friends, get more supporters, get more people going down to the plunge. Currently, from what I have seen over the last year and a half that the city's had it, it has not received community support. End of story. I mean, it just has not received community support.
Why don't you go in there swimming?
Because I can't afford $12 to swim.
Oh, come on.
Now, we've got a new point of service sales down there that is going to give some accurate economic information concerning the admissions and so forth and the revenues. That has to be given an opportunity to be utilized. If it's going to require, there's nothing better I would like to see than the plunge to be open every day and attract people. So far, it hasn't happened. How much longer do we have to wait before it starts making some money? Now, I realize it's only been a year and a half, but this is an ongoing business. This is not a, a new business starting. I can understand the dilemma, and you folks that are, that are behind the plunge really want to have it, but you're going to have to ask yourself, at what point does the taxpayer have to continue subsidizing what you enjoy? Thank you.
Bob, are you in line? I can't see who's in the dark there.
Hi, my name is Missy Brand. I'm the head swim coach for the swim team here. And I'll make this less than five minutes, I promise. Four years ago, I do believe it was, the plunge, when it was privately owned, cut the hours, just as you're proposing to do now, and our swim team went from being around 35 kids down to three. We had to drive back and forth to other pools, other, other towns to be able to swim eventually because they ended up closing for all five days. Two days a week, to be quite honest with you, Mondays and Wednesdays is not enough for a swim team to be competitive in swimming. We need a swim pool. And so what I would like to offer from Fall River Swim Team standpoint is whatever help, whatever support that the swim team can give, whether it be fundraising, whether it be purchasing pool time, I do believe that 70% or more of our swim team athletes are already members of the plunge, but whatever else we can do to see this be successful. To be quite honest with you, without a, without a pool, there is no swim team. It's not, it's not a soccer team where we can just find a field, go kick a ball in. We do need a pool. So the Fall River Swim Team is very open to whatever we can do to make this pool successful. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for coaching the team. Appreciate that.
Hello, my name's Chris Pinnell. A few things. First off, this Friday is 9/11, so there's going to be Grand Stair Challenge at the VA Steps at 6:30, so I invite all you guys to come. 6:30 AM because we're going to be honoring our fellow heroes and our fellow Americans that died in the Twin Towers on that day during the Grand Stair Challenge. And that night, amongst the American Legion, we're having a Patriot Dinner that night to honor our local EMS, our local firefighters, and our local police department, sheriff's department. I invite all you guys to come on now. We need to give back to these people because they sacrifice so much for us on a daily basis, so we just got to give, go out there and give them thanks. And another thing is, we're talking about community support, getting together. Well, this past Saturday, I got to go and be part of the fitness of the park, and I thought that was awesome because not only do we have the Blue Bird Mesa, we got the Evans Plunge, we got Health for Life Fitness, and we have the City of Hot Springs all coming together for an awesome free event, fitness of the park. And I think as a city, we, we do have to look at, at our revenues and stuff, and we have to come together. We got to quit fighting with each other, and we got to come together, just like we come together for, for these other events, just like we've come together to rally for Otto Shemone, who's going to be competing in Miss America on, on this September 13th, so we shall be watching it. But we need to come together. We need to come together and, and save our Evans Plunge.
Basically, that's what we're all trying to do, is we're trying to get the city to work with everybody, but there again, we all know that not everybody's going to be happy. So, and I agree with you that there are some things happening in the city now that really look good to me, and I, I'm proud to at least be part of, in my name if nothing else. So, thank you.
We make it work. Thanks, Chris.
My name gets accounted in some stuff, good and bad.
Just a couple more other things, real quick.
Okay, I need you to wrap it up.
I, I will. I think one thing that would help out the plunge generally is if we could get some new slides in there, because I don't know if you guys know this or not, but the people that bought the Flintstone Billits are planning on putting a brand-new water park next year in Custer, South Dakota. So we need to do something now to bring those people from Custer down here. We need to get new slides or something.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you. Neil, play it in the dark.
Yes, yes, it is. Neil Miller, 846 Almond. I wanted to address a challenge which the city seems to not have given the members.
Can you move up to the mic a little?
A challenge of how many more members do we need? What do we need to keep it open? It seems like it's the same as the old owners.
Define what you mean by open, because...
Do we need to triple them?
It's open, the proposal is to close a couple days, but that doesn't mean we're closed.
A couple days, yes. What do we need to keep it open seven days a week?
Okay, thank you.
Do we need to triple the membership? Double the members?
Double the membership? What would the city, what could we do? That's why I say about a challenge. To me, I pay 58 cents a day to be a member. And I'm sorry about Bob thinking it's $12. Maybe he doesn't have the annual membership thing, but 58 cents a day is one big bargain. I just hope we can work something out. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil.
Good evening. I'm Linda Stoll. I'm the assistant coach of the swim team. And I just wondered if memberships would increase if you offered a seniors rate. I belong to the swim center in Rapid City, and it costs me less than half of what it costs me to belong at the plunge. And we have senior rates at the golf course. And I was wondering why we don't have senior rates at the plunge, considering our aged community. That might attract more people for the annual memberships. Have you talked about that?
Yes.
And?
It is on the agenda tonight, actually. We're talking a lot about hours and when we're open, but on the agenda tonight is also a discussion, possible motion on Evans Plunge rates, which does include a 10% discount for seniors, veterans, AAA.
10%?
Yes. Seems to be about the industry standard for a discount like that.
Okay.
Thank you, Linda.
Hey, folks. My name's Roger Whipple. And I really didn't have a prepared statement, but what I wanted to do is commend you all for the efforts that you made with Evans Plunge. Because what I'm talking about is I really think, now Hot Springs is going through some troubling times. But I think this is a great community with a lot of natural resources. And I think there's great potential. I honestly believe that Hot Springs's best years are ahead of it. And what we need to do is tap into the natural resources that we have, such as what made this town and put this town in the map in the first place. We might be going through some tough times. But if we stay the course, I guarantee you, maybe, maybe not in our generations, I'm kind of an old man, but in future generations, Hot Springs is going to blossom, regardless of what happens at the VA. This town's got a lot of potential, and we really need to develop the resources we have. And that is what gave us our name, Hot Springs. So keep up the good work, stay the course. We'll go through some tough times. But if we follow through, trust me, this town will grow beyond our wildest dreams.
Thanks, Roger.
Thank you, Roger. That's a lot of us that agree.
Lisa Couch Whipple. I'm a lifetime resident of Fall River County. My concerns are twofold with the Evans Plunge. My daughter has been a swim team member since she was six years old, with the exception of one year. She's 17. I've been in health care for over 30 years. I have seen the benefits of individuals who are able to partake of the Evans Plunge seven days a week. It has made an amazing difference in their overall health care, their physical well-being. This is something they need to do seven days a week. If their health is good, they continue to contribute to the overall well-being of Hot Springs. Our youth, they don't have a lot to do. Our swim team is growing beyond leaps and bounds. That's in large part to Linda Stoll and Missy Brand. Other coaches are paid very well for their services. Missy and Linda donate those services. There was one year when the plunge was closed that I did drive my daughter to Rapid City for swimming three days a week. That was a very long haul, not to mention expensive. So I think that if we could keep in mind keeping the plunge open seven days a week for the health of all the residents in Fall River County, as well as to encourage our youth to participate in swim team, it would be a win-win situation for all of us.
Thank you, Lisa.
Janie Montgomery, different subject. I'm just going to be bold enough to say, at some point, I would like to see Hot Springs very, very much consider half-salt cent penny, a half penny or a full penny sales tax so that we can start pooling money to start developing some of them resources that Mr. Whipple was talking about. I'm just curious. I'm just going to ask you to think about it. Have you ever thought about it? Are you willing to say it out loud? And...
We do have a third penny sales tax.
We get an additional two cents.
You get an additional two cents that goes to the city, right? What I'm talking about is a half cent sales tax that is put away for projects to develop these resources. That's all. It would be very much like the 2020 or 2012, now it's called 2020 Rapid City does. They collect a half-cent sales tax, particularly from the tourists. And they put it away in a fund that is only designated to improve the resources of selling a Rapid City. Okay? So it wouldn't go to streets. Not for marketing. It's pooled. Matter of fact, that's how they developed along the parkways, along the creek in Rapid City. I'm trying to figure out where I live here. They have developed a lot of the Memorial Park from that funding, the Main Street Square from that funding. And it's pooled only in a bank that's designated for improving, similar to what the ID is supposed to do, but it's improving resources. So you collect a half cent from every dollar that's spent in the City of Hot Springs. You put it in a bank, and that's only meant to be applied to improving resources, such as the Fall River Falls Parkway.
That's city property.
And it's a city vote that it has to come down to. So I'm just...
It requires an election.
And it requires an election. But I think that is where we need to start.
Thanks.
Thank you.
That's great.
Thanks for demo communications from the public. And I do appreciate you all, especially your comments about the plunge because it is a difficult decision for the council to make. I'm going to move along to personnel. And if anybody, if you're not opposed, I would like to do all personnel together.
Make motion, Joe Groh.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor of all the personnel?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion now, motion carried. We'll go to committee reports. Carl, did we have admin and finance since the last meeting?
No, we did not.
Okay. Georgia Airport.
We did have a meeting with our airport committee, and we talked about the ambulance possibly building out there. They were interested in building a hangar. Basically, that was pretty much most of our information that we received. I did visit with our pilots that do the...
Fly-in?
Well, the fly-in's coming this Friday. And that is something that's very important. But, no. Well, sea plane, I did visit with them too. No, our glider pilots. And we built our glider pilot building last, two years ago. And it is full. They would like another one. And I did get to go up. It's very entertaining. They do have classes they offer, and they would like you to check out the community education calendar and possibly entertain, getting some education from them. And they do offer flights. As far as the ambulance airplane being put out there, that's still a debate as to what we can do for funding.
Lifelike.
Lifelike. As far as funding for that, we did give them, or they understood about our budget. We did go down quite a bit in our budget. We do have one person. We will be using part-time summer help out there, but we cut back on that quite a bit. I think that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Georgia. And I wanted to thank Tim as well for attending that meeting. And you got your tour Friday, right?
They do recommend councils still coming out. They would be glad to show you any of their new and developed things. We did get a beautiful runway now that is all finished. And the flights that are offered, you know, people are out there, I'm sure that they would give you some flights.
We do have a very busy active airport.
Yes.
We do encourage you to go out and see, you know, the city airport and all the activities out there. In Georgia, it does have quite a bit on replay with having the airport advisory committee. So I do appreciate that. Take a trip out there and see what's going on. Go ahead.
I believe there's a fly-in this weekend.
Friday. By Friday.
Friday.
I don't know.
That sounds like it's, I've never seen one, so...
You can drive in too.
Right, you can drive in too. But they have, Ed said like 30 planes that were going to come in here this weekend.
They started arriving around noon.
Excuse me?
They start arriving around noon.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. But it's something to see. They've got quite a little airport.
Yeah, we do have jumping classes going on out there too. So Saturday was a big day. Most every Saturday. A parachute jumping. Sorry, not just jumping. But parachute jumping. And they are, they are very entertaining. So if you want some entertainment, you should go out there.
Thank you again. The airport's a very busy place. Deanne Chamber, where you have a board, had a meeting and discussed where proposed events, a job fair located here at the Mueller Center tomorrow, 12 to 6. And as Chris Pennell mentioned, the Grand Stair Walk, September 11th at VA, 6:30. Coming also, Mickelson Trail Trek, September 18th. And the mural celebrated at Evans Plunge 125th Celebration, September 28th.
19.
From 2 to 4, I believe. 19, 2 to 4.
Okay, thank you.
Just to make sure you have it right. Okay? And at the Pioneer Museum, they will be hosting the Ag Expo and the Pioneer Fall Festival on October 10. There will be a fun run, October 24th. Conservation Day will be held in October. No date has been established. The Rush Hockey Team is hosting a Hot Springs Night with discounts. And that will be Hot Springs Day on November 6. The Ag Banquet will be November 7. And I need to add, Kara Hagan brought up discussion on making Hot Springs a wedding destination, in which she attended the wedding events at Hotel Alex Johnson in Rapid City and also Main Street Square. And I think there's so much we can do in our town. We have so many possibilities that so many of you have brought up in discussion. Thank you, Deanne.
Thank you.
And also, also, we have the Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management District Meeting. That will be September 10th, this Wednesday. Meeting will begin at 6:45. And mainly, the discussion will be construction of Phase 3 by the Barkers on developing the cell for the depositing of Custer Fall River's revenues. And also, that's going to be in Edgemont this time at 28470 Lookout Road. And that is the site of the landfill itself. Another discussion will be the 2016 budget presentation. And yearly fuel quotes. And also, representatives from South Dakota PAA Insurance will discuss coverage on the landfill. And that's all I've got. Thanks, Deanne. You're welcome. All right. IDA, which is the Downtown Historic Preservation Commission. And I know you had a meeting, and I know you were productive. Again, you may know more than I do. We approved a sign. And Kim Barberi gave us, our building inspector, our planning administrator, gave us an update on the West Oak Building. And the building next to City Hall, I'm not sure what that would be called, but they're working with the owners of that. And we're hopeful, crossing our fingers, that we'll get somewhere with that. That's all. And you approved the painting of the police department? Oh, I knew there was something else. Yes. We approved painting the police department. We hope you like the colors. And that is it. Thank you. The request was that they be manly. So, thank you for giving it manly colors. Okay. Was there one other thing? That's it? All right, thank you, Carolyn. Appreciate it. Kara, Evans Plunge.
It's a hot topic tonight.
It is a hot topic.
Yeah, the Plunge Advisory Committee met. And just so you know, who's on the advisory committee is Nolan Schroder, Chris Hansen, Rod Meyer, who's maintenance, Steve Winyer, Tim Tesh, Nate Ritter-Bush, and myself. And we discussed the new facility director, which is Chris Hansen, which we're all very excited about. I'm especially excited about her. I think she brings a really good value to Evans Plunge as a manager. And we had Trace DeBoer there. And she was, is with the Southern Hills Recreation Initiative. And we discussed possibility of teaming up with that group, you know, how that looks, if that could happen. They since have had meetings. You know, we haven't really had any follow-up. We're just kind of trying to figure out how we can work together, and if that's possible. Another discussion we have, which is also, we're going to be talking a little bit later, was what are our current winter hours? They're currently standing at a split hour, Monday through Friday, closing from 11 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. And we discussed recommending new hours for the winter, which are the full days from 6 a.m. to 8 p.m., close Tuesday, Thursday during the week. The weekends are basically the same. So that's the difference. That's where we're at right now. The advisory committee, after a long, hard look at the hours and our budget, and all things considered, and I did lose sleep over this. It was not an easy decision to make or recommend, are recommending the new winter hours, which we'll be discussing here in a little bit. The Evans Plunge logo is almost done. Maria Marches is doing a great job. We discussed marketing. We discussed a new sign by the door that will state our hours once the council approves those. And we discussed the new merchandising and what we're going to do for marketing, what we're going to do for the events over the next year, how we're going to not just change the hours, but, you know, discuss changing the hours. You know, what can we do to make Evans Plunge better? How can we not lose so much money? How can we increase marketing visibility, make people want to come? We do have a very, very large natural mineral spring. And it's very different than any other place, anywhere. We've got $5,000 a minute. So they can build a place in Custer, as far as I'm concerned. They can't really replace our natural spring water. We've got something really special here in Hot Springs. And that's our natural resources, as Roger stated earlier. We've got something really special here in Hot Springs, and that's our natural resources, as Roger stated earlier. So we're gonna try to promote that better and give that more visibility, so people really understand that, and we can hang our hat on that. Hundred and twenty-fifth party is gonna be on the nineteenth, as Deanne said, and that's from two to four. I'm excited, we're gonna promote membership at that time. And we have recommendation on rate changes, and we're gonna be discussing that as well. We're gonna talk about ADA complacency. We did a walkthrough with Kim Barberi, and we're gonna try to figure out how we can get some ADA in there. We've got so many improvements that the Evans Plunge to make, so many updates to make. And we're just making this grand master wish list that we're gonna just chip away one thing at a time, and hopefully we can get that place looking better for you here in the next at least six months and over the winter. That's about it. Our next meeting is gonna be September seventeenth. Anyone's welcome, seven PM, Upper Level at Evans Plunge.
Thank you Kara, you got a tough job too. Appreciate it. Krista, I know you had a meeting, 'cause it was today.
Yeah, well, I had one with the cultural development also, and.
You gotta speak into your microphone.
Also with the cultural development, we had a meeting, and we discussed that Patriot Day coming up on nine eleven. They sent out these really great flyers, and they will be having a potluck program there. So I encourage everybody that can go, to go. And then they, they'll be connecting with Evans Plunge on their hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary celebration, and they'll be talking about the mural, and can't miss it, it's gorgeous. And so that was at the, at the cultural development meeting. And I believe their next meeting, Kim is going to attend that, 'cause I won't be here. I believe that's on the seventeenth. It's at six o'clock, and it's at Brooks Treasures. And then we had the personless meeting today at three, three o'clock at City Hall. And we discussed, let me just put it out, just a second. Supporting Christmas in the Hills. We are also discuss the RTP Freedom Trail Grant and Timeline. The funding for benches, Brookside Park Sidewalk, the work in the playground there. We discussed painting Butler Park and the schedule, also some projects that are downtown. And the USDA informational update. Is there anything I missed? Sounds about right. So that's what we discussed in the next meeting, of course, will be the first Monday of the month, next month, three o'clock, City Hall.
Great, thank you very much Krista. Public safety, Kim?
Yeah, we, yes, we did. We discussed the, I'm trying to figure out how to say this so that it really doesn't sound strange.
It's how springs just go, right?
What we discussed is going with Fall River Services, and we're gonna discuss having a drug drop-off day. And it's a.
We can talk about that more if you want.
Can you? Anyway, that's one of the things that we discussed that day. And I guess the reason it was brought to us is we need some police there while it's doing it. What this is, is it's a thing for you to clean out your medicine cabinets. You know, a lot of us, you know, that, that painkiller that we got a year and a half ago, that we might use someday, this is the way to get rid of it, so it's not in your medicine cabinet anymore. And it's a free deal, so, and it's totally anonymous. You walk in, nobody, they just got a place there where you dump it in, nobody sees it, nobody checked it, and then it's all sealed up and shipped away to be destroyed. If you've got something you'd like to add, go ahead and say it.
Well, I'll, I'll be getting my paper, the details probably tomorrow or the next day for next week's paper. You need it by Thursday, noon, right? So it'll, the, the details will be in the Star and on our city website. It's the twenty-sixth, and I don't remember the exact hours, but it's like ten to two, I think. And just like Tim said, it's going to be a program that the City of Hot Springs is sponsoring by putting an officer there for all four hours. We're actually putting our new captain, we have a new police captain, Bill Wyman, Officer, Captain Wyman. And he will be there, so if you wanna come out and meet him, he'll be there as well. But we'll get you the details of the drug drop-off. They, they call it. Well, their, their poster says got drugs, so it's, they're working on the marketing it, I think. But it's, it's definitely a great program, so you're not flushing, you know, these things down the toilet or throwing them away where someone else could, they could get in the wrong hands. So we're gonna support this twice a year going forward. With Fall River Health Services, so it's, it's actually the hospital pharmacy that's partnering with us.
That's what we have for safety.
Well, then you better go into public works.
We're gonna go with works. We had a couple billing disputes, one of them was, nobody showed up. The other one, I think we've kinda got settled. We had to want some utilities included down at the Smoke and T and D, and we're gonna work with him to find out just where the utilities come off the main street onto his property. 'Cause right now, it's just like a lot of properties in Hot Springs, the buildings have been removed, and the utilities were just, just covered up. So now we're gonna go in and see if we can find them for it. We also discussed with Hills Material, positive agreement, do some mining. We've got some land up by their pit that is landlocked, that nobody can get to, and they would like to mine it. And we're opening up discussions on that again. Also, there was our Albany Water Bank. Has reached the end of their contract. And as of the first of September, we've decided because of the late start that he will start paying penalty, which is something new and unusual for the city of Hot Springs. And we've also discussed some of the water and sewer rates. I see that's on the agenda for tonight. However, I will go into that at that time.
That's, that's not on the agenda.
That's not with the rates.
Sorry, you're probably quoting as the other, but the rates.
Good, then I can back up, because I had proposed that we go to admin before.
Yes.
We go to the admin committee before we do this. Also, I'd like to say something to you folks about the group that's sitting up here. We have a lot of new people up here, and a lot of us are on committees that we've never been on before. And actually, when you come on in July, and you start budget meetings, the first of August, you really don't start getting into your committees till towards the end of August and the first of September. So, you know, give us a little time to get our feet wet here when we're doing all this. Yeah, literally. But I think that, you know, the group up here remained for having such short times we have, some of these members up here have really jumped in and started doing stuff right away rather than backing off. It took me, this is my second time around, and I'm still learning a whole lot, I'll tell you.
Thank you, Tim. That is a tough job. All right, Georgia, maybe I'll put your two things together, like Deanne's are, but the golf course.
Oh, okay, that's a good idea. Okay, the golf course, we didn't have a formal meeting, but I did meet with Jason, and I discussed the budget with him. We did, and as we will probably do our appropriation ordinance here shortly tonight, we did set money aside to take care of the irrigation issues up there from the two-twelve fund. And I believe there's going to be discussion on prices up there also, and I think there's a meeting on, with the board tomorrow. Is that right, Nolan?
Yes.
And so those are things that are coming up. They're busy, but they probably have had issues with rain, so they haven't had as much golfing as they normally do. And we have our, our study that we did from Kevin Norby. And so we're gonna start working on more of those projects and get those taken care of a little bit at a time. They're not necessarily going to be cheap ones, so we're working on that. So anyway, that's all I have.
Just to give some assurance to the public, we did have a very, very wet summer, but our revenues are actually up over the summer from golf activities. So despite the weather, we are still up over last year, so we're good there.
Yeah, it's great.
That it?
Yep.
All right, thank you. All right, moving to ordinances, again, A and B, we're moving out to the twenty-first. Item C is the first reading of ordinance eleven fifty-eight, the 2016 appropriation ordinance, which is where, how we set our budget for the coming year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
Carl?
I met with Georgia today, and we were talking about the water and sewer. And I wondered why each of them were being hit for three hundred thousand dollars a piece. Is that not part of this?
No, that's the next.
That's the next ordinance.
Third, actually.
That's in this calendar year.
And that's not this ordinance we're talking about, and that is in this calendar year. And they're not being hit, we're just, they've spent more than you allocated in your budget authority for last year because of a few projects.
Okay.
It's on number EE.
But yeah, that's not this ordinance.
This, I had a question on our police, on our public safety. Can you, I thought we were less than that on that one. That one went over. On the police, number four twenty-one, on the public safety.
Okay.
I thought that was less than that.
That's the amount that was approved as a budget year. And are you looking at the total, because that also includes the support services for dispatch and building inspections?
No, I was looking at the five forty-five.
That is.
Because we had contract, yeah, 'cause we had, we could contract with this county for three hundred and sixty is what we had. But I know, it's just a lot more than.
I actually asked the county about that, and they have not agreed to that. It's been discussed for several years.
It's been discussed.
Because that's not something that we were offered.
They, they did offer once, but anyway, it's a lot more.
This year.
Yeah. Okay, I, that's all I had.
Okay, any other discussion on the first reading of ordinance eleven fifty-eight? This is setting our 2016 budget.
I guess I do have one more. Your other sources on the revenue on the second page, three ninety, the way that's written? Three ninety on the second page for other sources of revenue? Do you call that?
That's the a hundred thousand from water and sewer.
Okay.
Any other discussion? This is just the first reading, but all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
You're opposing?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm not opposing the fact that it's a balanced budget. I'm opposing the fact of how some of it was balanced.
Okay. Motion carried. Item D, again, first reading of ordinance eleven fifty-nine. Amendment of Chapter nine dash A dot zero two fireworks ordinance. Information's in your packet, but it's basically reducing the number of days that fireworks will be allowed in the city from two, three to one.
Make a motion that this be tabled indefinitely.
Discussion? I have a motion and a second, so discussion is allowed?
No.
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 That's our discussion? All in, well, I don't know if I can table it definitely, but all in favor of tabling?
All right, sorry, one more time?
Go ahead. I believe I have a motion and a second to table this item. And so I am asking if there's any further discussion. If not, I'm gonna ask for a vote.
I do have, I do have a little discussion on that. My concern is the enforcement issue with that. I just feel like when we cut it back so, to such a small number.
I'm sure you can discuss a tabled motion. I believe you just voted on it, and then you go from there. I don't think you can discuss a tabled motion.
You don't.
Okay.
Never mind.
The only motion that you have discussion on is a motion that has been, a motion for passage and a second, and then discussion, and then if you have a table on it, there's no discussion on the tabling.
All right, so I will go out for a vote, all in favor of tabling.
Do you like me to do a roll call?
Sure.
Carl Ashley?
No.
Tim Tesher?
Yeah.
Georgia Holmes?
Yes.
We're, we're voting to table.
Right.
Just to be clear.
Kara Hagan?
No.
Andrea Kramer?
Yes.
Krista Svalin?
No.
Carol Anne Schwarzenbach?
No.
Deanne McComb?
Yes.
I have four in favor and four not.
So it fails to be tabled.
You can break that vote, or you can not vote, I'm gonna discuss the mayor, whether she wants her or not. This does not involve money.
Right, but we're just voting to table or not.
That's right. May you have a four to four vote?
I wasn't expecting this one to be tabled. I, I would like to table it then as well, because I think we need to have further discussion on it, outside of right now. All right, so fireworks is tabled. Okay, now Carl, item E, which is the first reading of ordinance eleven sixty, supplemental appropriation ordinance for water and sewer. And again.
Motion to, motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? The first reading passes. Resolution twenty fifteen dash thirty-seven, a resolution to support the Christmas in the Hills Committee Light Up Our Town campaign. This.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All, could you explain it?
I think we have some representative in the audience who'd like to.
Hi, I'm Karen Bestin with Christmas in the Hills.
I wanted you to explain, just a minute Karen.
Sure.
The motion itself, is that all there is to it?
The resolution, you said?
I mean, yeah, the resolution.
Yeah, the resolution's in the public packet and in your packet also. It reads kind of what is on the paper there. How to give the city five hundred dollars of our own funds, the other parks fund, whatever parks fund, which the money is in a budget to be used. Council thinks that resolution passes tonight. And then also, we can receive donations from the public, allowing us to buy more Christmas or holiday decorations to improve the downtown atmosphere during the non-peak tourist months.
So that's part of the resolution?
Yeah, and it reads just.
But we have a policy of people coming to budget hearings and asking for money. And I know you're saying it's in the budget, but we're opening the door now for other groups to come. Well, you gave Christmas in the Hills money, and they didn't come to the budget. I know, I know you're saying it's in the budget, but still.
Sorry, one time to clarify is, we are not giving away money. We are internally appropriating money from our parks budget to purchase for the city those lights. There's no money being handed out, it's all the city owning, retaining, making the purchase of the lights. There'd be no money changed hands when.
And it's just in the theme of what?
We'd be taking in money from donations, but no money going out. It's, we are the lead source and, sourcing the lights and then heading and maintaining the lights.
Okay. Any other questions from the council? Okay.
Just to reinforce what Nolan just said, cities normally, and we in the past have bought lights to decorate the town. In this instance, our group, Christmas in the Hills, whose mission is to light things up and make the holiday season more special, is volunteering to help coordinate the raising of funds in order for the city to buy lights to replace the lighting on the poles all the way from Evans Plunge, the intersection there with three eighty-five, where the antique, old-fashioned lamppost start, all the way down to Lins Dakota Mark where they stop. The idea being that, given the current financial situation, this is not gonna happen anytime soon with just using city funds, and so therefore, we're volunteering to help make that happen, because the current lights are a little tighter. because the current lights are a little tired. And so the project that we're offering here is really threefold. One is a phased project to get those light posts decorated again with new and consistent lighting. Secondly, to get Centennial Park lit up, and there we're talking about trees, structures and bridges. And third, to get the businesses, actually the buildings, lit up in town in that same area. We really want to make that happen for the whole town, for the buildings lit up and the Centennial Park this year. We're phasing in the lamppost lighting because it's very expensive. We've been talking to a number of civic groups, some who've already committed money, others who will be. And there are also folks anxious to donate. So all this money is coming to a separate fund for the city to use to purchase the lights. The city makes the decision about which lights and what the criteria are. We're giving recommendations, but it's the city's decision. We're just encouraging people to all get on board at once here to make this happen. Are there any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried? All business, discussion and possible motion to appoint the offices of Genderson Palmer Nelson and Ashmore LLP as the city attorney.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So Carl and Deanne, any discussion? Yes. I'm going to vote no for this and I want to explain why. We've had an offer from Ginsburg Farrell to be the city attorney. He's an experienced attorney, I think Jane Farrell's willing to help. They would charge less than this firm. They're local, our tax dollars or your tax dollars stay here. I don't have anything against this other law firm, but I'll vote no in support of local attorneys. Any other discussion?
Yes. And my understanding is that with, with partner of that firm to discuss is in conflict with the city. So I don't think it can be used.
Aren't they different attorneys?
It's the same firm. It's the same firm. They're on, he's on their list. Any other discussion?
Yes, Mayor Danell, have you contacted Martin who uses Genderson?
Yes. They give them, and actually several other cities use them as city attorneys in all of them. I'd say there's at least four that I'm aware of that are very pleased with your services. And Martin gave glowing reviews, actually.
Thank you. And I believe the firm said that they would be willing to split expenses, travel expenses with Martin. So they're working with us and I think that's important to recognize.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No.
No.
I believe it's six to two then, motion carried. New business, motion to approve alcohol, temporary alcohol beverage license for the vault for Badger Clark Poetry on the 25th.
Take a motion.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Item B, motion to authorize the city and it's required that the mayor as the city and the city attorney to sign the FAA grant offer for airport improvements. We've already signed this at the state level and we now just have to sign it at the federal level.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item C, discussion and possible motion to change the Evans Plunge operating hours. The proposal's in your packet.
I'll make a motion to table this until further discussion.
Motion to table?
Second.
And a second? All in favor of tabling?
Aye.
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 I need a roll call.
Carl Ashley?
Yeah.
Tim Tesher?
Yeah.
Georgia Holmes?
Yes.
Kara Hagan?
No.
Andrea Kramer?
Yes.
Krista Spillane?
No.
Carol Anne Schwarzenbach?
No.
Deanne McComb?
No.
Yeah, four yeses and four no's.
They got failed.
Motion to table failed.
So we'll go back to, so the tabling failed. So we'll go back to the original motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, Georgia, do you get a second?
I understand.
Can we explain what that is?
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Carol Anne seconded, I think somebody else down here, but I didn't hear. So I'm scared to ask, but any other discussion?
I do have one, and that is.
I do have some discussion with regard to this. With regard to this, the prior council had already voted on this, that these hours were to remain. Now we may have shorter hours on two or three days a week, but we didn't have anything on closing. The intention was, when we opened the plunge, was to have it open seven days a week. So the, changing the hours would be appropriate if it were shortening hours one or two days a week, but not closing two days a week. That is what most people voted on.
I just wanted to add too, the two days that we are budgeting to close, actually were not part of our budget when we did adopt our resolution tonight. So it was, it's above and beyond a change in our budget.
On that note, it will create a greater savings to all of us. And also with the closure on Tuesdays and Thursdays, it will allow time to accomplish things such as cleaning up the place and making it beautiful. We have beautiful mineral spring waters. Let's have a beautiful plunge as well. I encourage all of you to go on TripAdvisor and read the reviews. It's an eye-opener.
I'd like to really clarify where the current hours are. They're split. So if this recommended hour change does not go through, the hours that we're going to have are being closed Monday through Friday from 11:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. We will be closed during our lunch breaks, during tourist drop-ins, hotel stay drop-ins, five days a week. So this is recommending closing two days a week. Gives us the time for the repairs, saves us a lot of money.
Also, I want to, I want to add to that, that I'm a daily swimmer and I use the plunge a lot at different hours, but mostly mornings. And, you know, keeping it in the middle of the day is great for me, but it's not really great for the plunge because if you do look at TripAdvisor, you will see that it states over and over how great the water is, but how tired and how dirty and how sad-looking the plunge is. And if we were closed two days a week, we could actually make some repairs so that we could change those TripAdvisor reviews, so that we could get more tourists. Because people look at TripAdvisor when they make their decisions. So it's just another thought there of, you know, not always doing just what's great for us because, boy, I'd love it if it was just in the middle because then I could swim seven, five days a week instead of just.
I'm going to need you guys to go to the mic and line up, there's people already there.
I have another comment.
Okay, Carl, go ahead.
I must reiterate that the prior council had already passed these hours to remain seven days a week. Now this council is trying to change something a prior council already did. And the advisory committee is that, an advisory committee. Everything has to pass through the council. And I don't believe that the council, in prior terms, wanted to see any change to the hours of the Evans Plunge. Thank you.
I'd like to make one.
All right, I have several people lined up at the mic, but I need you guys to be really brief, okay? I mean, get your, you know, state your point.
I'm confused at where you're at right now.
Jeannie, I've got four people in line behind you, okay? I know.
I don't understand where you're at right now.
The current hours you're saying?
We're in discussion.
Yeah.
Well.
Karen, do you want to reiterate what the hours are about to change to by the council's last resolution? The previous council? Just one more time, please?
The previous council voted that we have split hours coming this winter, starting September 27th. And those hours will be open at 6:00 a.m., closed at 11:00 a.m. To 4:30 p.m. and then open again for 4:30 to 8:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. So we'll have a gap from 11:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., five days a week with those current hours. That's why I personally wanted to revisit this.
What about Saturday and Sunday?
Saturday and Sunday are about the same, yes, they're all.
Okay, I'm going to go back to the mic then. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Roxanne Berxias, I'm a resident of Hot Springs here. I've also been a member of Evans Plunge for 16 and a half years.
Turn that mic on, I can see the red light.
Just see it, closer to it.
Just get closer. I can see. Hello? Roxanne Berxias from Hot Springs. I've been a member, membership at Evans Plunge for 16 and a half years now and I love swimming there. It's been about six years now and the previous owners tried all this, cutting through the afternoon, cutting days, and then of course, then we went to six months. And we know what happened, everything went down, down, down. I'm proposing keep it open seven days a week. If you have to compromise and do a shorter shift on like Tuesday, Thursday, from 11:00 to 7:00, I think our memberships would stay or increase. And I also believe our swim team is very important, that they should have it open all the time. And if you do end up closing Tuesday, Thursday, can they still have the option to get their training in? Because I think this town really needs it, I think the kids need it. And we've had tourists in town here on Tuesdays and Thursdays through the winter months that wanted to swim at Evans Plunge when it was closed years ago and they were very mad about it. I'm from Minnesota, I know the third weekend in October, the schools are all closed for four days for a long weekend and we get a lot of tourists from Minnesota here. And when it's closed down on Thursday, they do get mad about it. Evans Plunge helps our business, the Dairy Queen a lot, which in turn helps us to pay more sales tax and everything. So I think we should do everything in our power to keep it open, seven days a week if possible. I think there's other ways to go about it. Managing it the right way is for one thing. I've been there during the middle of the week when there's been like three lifeguards on and five or six people swimming. So that can be cut down. I think three people during the slower days during the week is all it needs to really. And I think when you get large groups in town here through the winter, give them a $2 off coupon. We do it all the, all the time for ice cream cones and stuff and it brings people in.
We do that.
More, yeah, more promotions, better management, I think it's the way to go, instead of starting to cut the hours. And I love swimming here. I was the one who, when we're closed six months out of the year, I'd go to Rapid every week to swim. And I hate the water up here. We have the best water in the world and I think we should keep it open. Thank you.
Hi, it's me again, Bonnie.
I need you guys to be as brief as possible.
I will be, I'm just saying, if you close on Tuesday and Thursday, you're talking about maintenance and repair. You don't have the money for the repair and the maintenance. Those tile floors have to come up, as we all know, the paint has to come off the pool. But every time, there's always a budget restriction because the HVAC system goes up or something else goes out. I wouldn't mind if you had to shut down for a couple of hours, but so far we've seen no improvement in the cleanup. And Nolan, you said that was very important and the outdoor pool is miserable and the indoor pool is, got a lot of black slime around the walls. So, you know, if you really do need to close it for repairs, then we need to see immediate improvement, especially for the membership.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bonnie.
Hi, I'm John Robinson. I'm going to, I'm going to sound a little selfish here. My better half works at the plunge and cutting two days would cut $500 a month out of my, my small family's pocket. You gotta think about your other employees too. With my better half, who's going to employ her for two days a week that you guys are closed in the plunge so that she can make up that extra income? No one's going to hire somebody for two days a week on a Monday, or excuse me, a Tuesday, Thursday, so.
Just, just to reiterate. Current hours are about to change to a split shift, five days a week.
That's, that's, that's cutting 16 hours out of a week. If you were to split up with her shift, that's, she's only losing an hour and a half per day. So that's seven and a half per week.
Five and a half hours per day is more than 17.
But her, her shift would be, she'd be losing an hour and a half, two hours out of her shift. So that's seven and a half, eight hours a week as opposed to 16, so.
Thank you.
Cindy, I will be brief. Paul again. I have been in retail going on 40 years or better. I have been involved in scheduling employees. Kara, if you don't mind, I'd like to direct a question to you on behalf of the advisory board. To my way of thinking, and I'm not sure if you folks have given it thought, is it going to be easier for you to keep staffing with having a split shift as opposed to offering your employees a regular shift but being closed two days a week? Thank you.
Yeah, it does create quite a management conundrum. When we've got split shifts, some of those people will go home at 11:00 and then they have to come back in the evenings during the winter. And then your, our manager is, has to be available also, you know, that whole time, seven days a week. So it is more difficult, more complicated. So, you know, and again, this is, I see something as a transitional thing while we can get on our, back onto our feet. I want to see Evans Plunge around for a long time. So I feel very strongly that we need to really buckle down and get the improvements made. We need to right now. And we do have $52,000 budget once it's approved.
I can't hear you.
To do improvements.
I can't hear you, Kara.
We do have a little bit of money for improvement. It's not a lot, it's $52,000. And whatever happened in the past, happened in the past, we've got a new crew now and we want to get some things done and improved to make that place nice for you all.
Thank you.
Ray Walker, 2500 Medicata, Hampton Avenue, Hot Springs. Well, my question is, and I've asked this before probably back in February. I'm going to live with whatever you do, because I've been going there for 40 years, not quite that, but in my neighborhood. And worked there when they put the roof on, the outdoor pool and seeing all that. What is the specifics of the math here? We talk about all these changes and we know we get some stuff in the newsletter. We know that June, or July dropped off 34,000 in revenue and August dropped off. But what is the main thing that leads to cutting these hours? Is there, you got, can you get, have specific with your numbers more? Because it didn't help people to understand.
Yeah, I'll try to be brief but informative with these numbers. So in 2013, our accounting software showed that we lost $56,000 at Evans Plunge. 2014's unaudited figures show a loss of $306,000 at Evans Plunge. Year-to-date for this year, we're actually up $48,000, which is good. However, our good months, or so to speak, are behind us. And now we have the leaner months ahead of us to get through until end of fiscal year, calendar year 2015. And that is just for this year. So we're looking at a net loss year-to-date or so far, 313,769. We are projecting a loss next year of about $87,000 with reduced hours. We need about 250 new members, single members, to get that money back, which is about 5% of the Hot Springs population. We are seriously. We are seriously looking at everything in great detail.
Okay.
Teresa Bor, Plunge member. I see both sides of this, because I don't like the split shift thing, because my husband, that's the only time he can work out, is at noon, noon to 2:00. So, I would like you to consider another option, but I don't like the closing either, because I, of course, my whole family's on swim team. So, I understand the swim coach's dilemma as well. So, what about considering what somebody had just suggested, 11 to 7:00, or maybe even a noon to 6:00 on those Tuesdays and Thursdays, instead of... And I don't know, Nolan, did you figure out the numbers for any of that kind of stuff, instead of completely closing?
Krista.
Or whoever...
Budget was set for half-days.
Yes, you did consider half-days?
No, our budget was set for the half-day schedule that the last council approved, with the savings from that. And that is still with a projected over $80,000 loss. So, that is what we are discussing tonight, whether we leave the last decision to be closed five days a week in the middle of the day, or we change it to a two-day closure. Those are our choices.
The bottom line is, we have to get to the cost savings estimate about where it's currently at. And if we were to do a late start like you mentioned, where we have the afternoon still open, we'd incur a greater expense, meaning our budget would be less balanced than we anticipated it ought to be. So, it is a consideration we take into account, but at the same time, just to stretch our dollar as far as we can, we do not feel that was the one to recommend to the council.
Okay. And so, one more question, like, for example, with swim team, do you think it's possible to, if you didn't have to provide lifeguards?
We do.
That, well, oh, even if our lifeguards are, even if our swim coaches are certified, you'd still have to provide a lifeguard?
We would have to have staff present.
You'd have to have at least one staff present?
Yes.
And what if the swim team paid for that staff time?
We'd have to then go into some serious negotiations. That's more legal as opposed, because we'd have to contractually obligate the swim team organization to do that. And I'm not sure if your organization's set up to expense with a city like that. It's, it sounds great, we're not ruling out many means, but there's a lot to close in to get that agreement in place.
Okay, well, let's brainstorm a little bit more then. Thank you.
Hi, one more thing. If we do have to close two days a week, I would, I don't have a job right now, so I would volunteer my time to come in and help clean up and fix it up. And if we can work something out with the swim team, I am a former lifeguard, and I am a certified EMT, I would be willing to give my services to watch the kids and to watch, watch them swim, and I would do that on my own time, 'cause I have the training and I have the experience, and I am certified in CPR right now, and I'm a certified EMT.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Carla.
Thank you.
Very nice offer. Any other discussion?
I'd like to make one quick comment. This whole deal with this changing of hours was brought to a previous council, which I believe Carl and I were on. And the reason that this was brought up was, we were debating whether we wanted the Evans Plunge to be a municipal pool, which would mean that it would be subsidized by the taxpayers, or did we want it to be a business? And we came up with this, trying to find a happy medium. And that's where the original concept of splitting the times and the hours is so we could save some money to reach, try and reach the happy medium between a municipal pool and a public business. And that's when it was, and it was also, at that time, when we acquired the pool, the public was told we would be open seven days a week. So, that's just a little bit of background for just information. Thank you.
I'd like to further state that these two items, discussion and possible motion on changing the hours, and possible motion to change Evans Plunge rates, did not go before the admin and promotion committee. And they should've.
Okay.
And that was one of my reasons for tabling it earlier. I feel like we still have more discussion. I really do. We have more input that people would like to give. And if we do want to become a municipal pool, most places don't have the opportunity like we have, to have tourists come in and help support their pool. We're blessed in that regard. So, how we decide what we're gonna do is a big discussion. It has been all along. I really feel we need to support the tourism in the afternoon, too, but how do we do this? I feel like we have to go back to our admin.
I have a motion and second, as it is, and we've had discussion, and I'm assuming we're done with discussion. So, I'm gonna ask now for a vote on item C.
I'd like a roll call.
Okay.
Carl Aitchley?
No.
Tim Tesher?
No.
Georgia Holmes?
No.
Kara Hagan?
Yes.
Andrea Kramer?
No.
Kristus Belain?
Yes.
Carol Anne Schwarzenbach?
Yes.
Deanne McComb?
Yes.
You have four yeses and four noes.
That one I was expecting.
Since we have a no motion, and it's up to the mayor, I would like to request that the mayor send this to committee.
Clearly, there's more discussion that people wanna see on this, and I know I'd like it to be over more than anybody. How long do we have before that, the new hours go into effect? Twenty-seven. So, we actually have one more council meeting before that. And I just went in, I was actually on a competitive swim team, and I would like to see a plan to support the swim team. There's no way they can be competitive when they're closed two out of the, how many, I don't know how many days that you guys...
Practice, four days.
So, we would basically cut your training time in half, correct, with the proposal? What?
Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Saturday. Well, we'll take it back to the front, Laura.
So, you don't need Tuesday and Thursday?
We need to stay Thursday. Swimming's on Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Oh, okay. And I also have a concern that the previous council passed the current, you know, the hours. So, I don't wanna go against the previous council with breaking a tie. I would like this to be discussed further and take into consideration what we would be destroying the swim team in Hot Springs, I think. We had to practice, like, six days a week, so, you know, I just have that personal conflict there with the swim team being non-competitive. There's no way they can... What is the schedule? What is the season for swim team?
You asked me?
Yeah, whoever knows, if somebody knows. Yeah, I'm looking at you, though.
The winter short-course season is October to the first weekend in March.
Oh.
And the summer long-course season is June and July.
Okay.
And the times?
Times what?
The times you practice?
Oh, we practice from 4:30 to 6:30, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday.
And I'm just gonna ask that that be taken into consideration, and I'm not opposed to this being discussed again on the 21st. I just don't think that we've completely created a plan for them to be a competitive swim team, and...
I agree.
I think you're right.
Yeah, you have a problem. Can I make a suggestion?
Do we refer to this to the admin committee?
I would make a suggestion that we don't refer this to the admin committee. Kara has worked on this with her advisory committee. They've got a big group, they work diligently on this. I think they're the appropriate venue. I don't wanna step in and tell them what to do. I feel like they should be the ones to do that. Maybe look at this again and see what they can come up with.
Did you make a motion, Tim?
I have a motion.
I'll second his motion.
Your motion was to refer it, and you seconded it? So, I have to, I will take a vote on whether we want this to go to the admin committee first, or before we make a final decision. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I need a roll call. I think I got four again. It's not gonna get anywhere, I don't think.
This is a motion that was made by Tesher and seconded by Holmes to go to the admin committee. Carl Aitchley?
That the hour, operating hours discussion goes in front of the admin committee.
Carl Aitchley?
Yes.
Tim Tesher?
Yes.
Georgia Holmes?
Yes.
Kara Hagan?
No.
Andrea Kramer?
Yes.
Kristus Belain?
No.
Carol Anne Schwarzenbach?
No.
Deanne McComb?
No.
Four and four.
So, it failed.
Can I make a motion that it goes back to the advisory? And I'll second that. Well, you mean the plunge advisory. It is. I mean, they're, they own it, right? I don't think we need a motion.
So, they don't own, the council owns it.
Well, they are making a recommendation.
Yes.
I am asking for another, a deeper dive into supporting our swim team.
You can break that tie.
So, I'm not gonna break the tie until I have some data on that, a little more data on that. So, I apologize, I know this has been, as you all know, a very contentious and passionate discussion, and I appreciate that. I'm gonna move to item D, which is the plunge rates.
Don't you have to vote on that?
I was gonna say, we need to finish.
You have a, you have a motion to send it back to the advisory committee? You have a second. Do you not have to vote on that motion?
We did.
We did. There was a tie.
You're withdrawing the motion. Right.
Okay. Point of order.
Because it's, it's...
It's just a point of order. You have a motion and you have a second. You had no vote, I'll make a decision. Motion has been withdrawn.
The plunge advisory committee will, will look at it again. I'm gonna go to item D on the plunge rates. The council received a proposal for plunge rate changes.
We make a recommendation that is go to the admin and promotion committee.
I'll second that.
It's gonna be Deja Vu. It's gonna be Deja Vu. I think I hit crystal ball this one. All in favor of going to admin and promotion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
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 Is that five to three? I need a roll call. I got too many quiet people.
Okay, so, we have a motion to change Evans Plunge, or a motion to have the change of Evans Plunge rates go in front of the admin finance committee. So, I'm taking a roll call on that motion. Carl Aitchley?
Yeah.
Tim Tesher?
Yes.
Georgia Holmes?
Yes.
Kara Hagan?
No.
No?
No.
Andrea Kramer?
Yes.
Kristus Belain?
No.
Carol Anne Schwarzenbach?
No.
Deanne McComb?
No.
I have a four and four vote. The motion fails.
So, I need to go back to the original discussion and possible motion on Evans Plunge rates, as are in your package.
I'm wondering if we should discuss what this is.
I need a motion. You need a motion first. I'll make a motion. Thank you. I need a second to discuss. You seconded that. Now, we can discuss the Evans Plunge rates.
Okay, so, most of the rates that were proposed to us, basically, the city has no discounts any longer. We've had that from 25% off when we first proposed our use of our plunge. It was to get people in town to use it, and we probably need to promote it more because our membership has dropped, but that's beside the point. But I understand it's to make it equal to everybody now, and it'll go up for a lot of, everything will go up for the city people, is basically what's proposed here. All the rates will go up, yeah. And I can't see anyone with a family paying $720. Our goal was to get people in the water. I just, I feel like this is really outrageous. It needs to be evaluated closer.
If a one-day swim for a family of four would be $48.
Our plunge tickets, we made them so that they would be affordable to everybody, and we have a very good system if people would use it. One of the things that we looked at was how our plunge was actually advertised, and 21% of the people they did look at, which was the highest amount, was done by word of mouth. And our city needs to still advertise themselves, and if you don't get out, bring somebody in, but this price is gonna be way over most people for their budgets, you know? I just don't think that this is gonna work. It's not going to help us, it's probably gonna hurt us more.
Okay, thank you, Georgia. Any other discussion on the rates in your package?
Yes.
Carl, go ahead.
The rates in the package, I think, are too high for the local people. The tourists are gonna pay what we have already established, more pricing for the tourists. But the local people, since it's their tax dollars that are subsidizing and carrying this through at this point in time, this should be, we should have at least a day or a half a day that is free to the public, for the residents of the city of Hot Springs. I believe these rates are a little too high in comparison to what they were, and I regret to say that I just don't, I don't believe that these are the rates that should be put into effect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Carl.
I would like to say that I'm not for free days, 'cause everything costs money. So, free days is probably not the right answer, but $5.00 Fridays or something like that, I think, would be a better marketing strategy versus giving out free. People can afford $5.00 to go swimming. They can't afford to send their kid for $10.00 just to go swimming for a couple hours.
We did, didn't we, exactly? We do have a twilight rate of two hours of swimming, $4.00, $5.00, actually. That's every day. We also offer youth punch cards to make it up, let's see here, youth punch card may be less than $5.00 a day. And we also now offer, if you read a book eight times a year, you can get free admission at least once a month. We really are trying to do our best to give the public access to the plunge at a rate they can afford. It's just not gonna be every day, it's not gonna be free.
But keep in mind that there is no school on Fridays. Huge, $5.00 Fridays, amazing. I mean, those, I can't imagine that the school would not promote, help promote that, and that that pool would not be packed every single Friday.
Those kids also eat food.
Well, the rate, again, offer...
I would send $10.00, they can eat and swim all day long.
Okay, well, the rate's actually already changed now. For a punch card, you can swim all day Friday for $5.00, and every other day, you get a punch card.
I've never seen a $5.00 Friday anywhere posted.
It's, if you purchase a punch card, you can access it for $5.00.
Right, but the punch cards went up as well.
That's still $5.00 a day.
Right now, actually, they're $32.00 for 10.
They're about $3.50 a day.
Now, they're 40.
Making it $5.00 a day.
I would like to make a motion that we table this for further discussion, as this is one of those that can go on forever, and...
I think because I had a motion and a second.
I'll second your motion to table.
I can make a table.
But I have to do, I think I still have to do the vote, because I had a motion and a second to do the vote as it's described in our agenda. If that doesn't fly, then we can do a different motion. But right now, I have to go, all in favor of the Evans Plunge rates, say aye.
I have one more thought, can I?
It's still in discussion.
This budget, actually, or these prices, we're not in our discussed budget. This is in excess of what we had already discussed. So it is not necessary that we do it at this time. We can wait.
On that note, I'll resend my second.
I don't know what we're doing. I'm sorry.
I got nothing.
Yeah, we have addressed the second.
I have no idea what we're doing.
I, I believe because we went down the road so far, I still need to get a vote on item D, because I had a motion and a second, okay? So all in favor, unless there's still discussion.
I'd like to take a roll call and vote.
Okay. So item D, under new business, the change to Evans' plunge rates that's in your packet, I need to evoke Misty.
Carl Ashley?
No.
Tim Tesher?
No.
Georgia Holmes?
No.
Kara Hagan?
Yes.
Andrea Kramer?
No.
Kristus Balain?
Yes.
Carol Anne Schwarzenbach?
Yes.
Deanne McComb?
No.
Yay, I have five no's and three yeses. Motion failed.
Thank you. Five to three?
Correct. Five no's, five against, three four.
So if the new rates failed?
Correct.
Motion carried.
So now can we move this to the?
Motion failed. I'm sorry, motion failed. What's, go ahead, Carl.
Can we now move this to the Admin and Promotion Meeting, Committee?
I guess that's entirely up to the Evans' Plunge Committee. If they wanted to...
Why don't you all come join us in our next meeting?
What's that?
I would recommend that you all come join us at Senator's next meeting. If you discuss the rates for him.
No, I didn't.
Kara is recommending that those interested in the rates attend the next Evans' Plunge Committee meeting.
Which is September 17th at 7:00 p.m.
We can't all be there.
Okay.
I can't have a full council there, though, unless...
You can't have a majority of the council there. That would constitute a quorum.
I'm done with that. So, um... The motion failed for the rates. How, how we address it further, we'll, we need to just take outside of this meeting for now. I'm gonna go to item D, which is the easement for Golden West up by Butler Park. The details are in your package.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carried. The easement will be allowed. Item F, motion to, uh, plunge. Motion to create aquatics director position, setting the scale. This is somewhat focused on the ever-popular water park of Evans' Plunge, as opposed to the business side of it. Any dis, or any motion?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We have a new position there. Item G, a motion to sign the contract with Nelson's Oil and Gas for propane pre-buy.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What is the price?
95 cents a gallon. I believe that passed. Opposed? Motion carried. All right. Item H, under new business, motion to exclude Sundays from late penalty charge for the Albany Water Project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Does anybody need to understand this? This is a contract that the city went into prior to the new council. So if you have questions, I welcome them now.
Yeah, could you please?
This was all part of what we discussed at the Public Works Meeting. This gentleman went, has gone over the finish date for his contract, so he's now in a penalty period. So he's paying penalties. However, I don't believe that he should have to pay penalties for Sunday. You know, I just, I guess that's just, you know, most of, most contractors don't work on Sundays anyway, so why should he have to pay a penalty for a regular day that they normally don't work? And that's why I propose that we exclude Sundays from his penalty payment.
Is that a normal way to begin? I don't know what it says.
Well, the contract, paraphrasing, of course, states that there's a $200 per day penalty for the days past August 31st.
I understand that.
Well, Krista's asking behind you here. So I'm explaining it to her. Okay?
And, and so you're just proposing that Sunday be eliminated from that?
That was the recommendation from the Public Works Committee.
And I just ask you, is that customary?
I guess it's probably not.
Whatever we decide, I guess. Whatever we decide.
Well, I'm talking to other...
It's probably not, but the whole concept that we're actually charging penalty is not customary for Hot Springs.
That we're forcing it? Because I've seen it on contracts in the past. We've never...
I know it's been on contracts.
Usually we waive them another time.
It's not customary.
Yeah.
But we voted on it, so we are...
A contract...
We're forcing it at this time? Misty said we go formally.
Well, I personally think we should enforce contracts.
Agreed.
That's an agreement between two parties that...
And that's what we're...
And are we gonna give them to me? And I'm not opposed to tabling this till the job's done and thinking about it at that time, so...
I'll make that a motion.
The job's not done.
I'll second it.
We have a motion.
Well, I have to, I have a motion and a second to discuss, or to accept or reject these Sundays, removing the Sundays from the late penalty, so I have to go to a vote for that first. And if that passes, it passes. So all in favor of excluding Sundays from the late penalty charge? Signify with an aye.
Is this for ever, or is this for just this one?
This is just this contract. So I'm gonna need a roll call.
So the vote, we have a motion and a second to exclude Sundays from the late penalty charge on the Albany Water Project. Carl Ashley?
Yeah.
Tim Tesher?
Yes.
Georgia Holmes?
Yes.
Kara Hagan?
Yes.
Andrea Kramer?
Yes.
Kristus Balain?
I'll vote yes, but it should be for everybody. It shouldn't just be for this.
It depends on how the contract's written, because all contracts are written.
Deanne McComb?
Yes.
Okay, I am all in favor.
All right, so we will exclude Sundays from the late penalty charge for the Albany Water Project. Motion carried.
Oh, okay.
Finance Officer report.
Can I interject for a second?
Sure.
Mayor, I'm sitting up here in the hospital, so I'm going to hang up. But I made it through this, through this meeting.
Yeah, I greatly appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Bye.
Okay, Misty? Finance Officer report.
I want to thank the council for voting to approve the personnel and the hiring of a new assistant finance officer. I've been very, very busy in the office, trying to keep up with the work of a couple people, so I'm so thankful and happy that that was approved tonight. Looking forward to getting some help so that I can continue to focus on the audits with the firms that we have hired and that we're working with. It requires a lot of communication and interaction, and that has been put on the back burner while I've been doing the work to keep the city running, so I'm just very thankful that that passed. I want to thank you for that, and looking forward to getting someone in and trained up to help out. And then also looking, hopefully, towards the completed 2014 audits. I want to remind who's left of the public that all expenditures and revenues are available at City Hall for public inspection, that we have a form available if you want specific information about financials for the city. I think that decisions that are made as the council for the public have to include financial ramifications and repercussions, and so no decision can be made that doesn't include that. And it's a very important piece of what all of these folks up here are struggling with and trying to find a balance. So for those of you that are left, which sadly is not enough people, please ask, come and look, see what they're struggling with as they try to make these decisions to make everyone happy. Come to the meetings, let your voices be heard at the advisory level so that when the council gets an opportunity to vote on something, the advisory committee has already found that balance. It's very difficult to take vote after vote and have an inability to make a decision when we're taking recommendations from an advisory committee that spend hours and hours poring over this information, and we're not giving any credit to what they've said, and have all these recommendations at a council meeting when truly, at the advisory level, that's where those comments should be heard and these discussions should be made. So I am happy that so many people showed up to talk about these things and that our community and our citizens are concerned, but the concern needs to look at all the facets, not just what's best for them, because that's what these folks have to do. So that's all I got. Thank you.
I'd like to begin by saying what Misty just said, except not having to say it. Thank you. That was very welcome, and I entirely agree. I've worked with Kara, and I understand, you know, Evans' plunge is a very hot-button item, and I've worked with our budget as well, at the same time, so it's interesting, going from one meeting to the next, talking about these improvements we need to make, at the same time, talking about that there's no money to make improvements. So I understand. It's a difficult decision, but at the committee levels, when really the details are hammered out and recommendations are able to be made. So thank you, Kara, for the work you've done thus far. Appreciate that. And also I'd like to encourage the council, too, to take the time, make an appointment, don't just show up, but make an appointment with Chris, the facility director, and ask her, what are your thoughts on this? Because really, she is the day-to-day. We talk about good ideas for these promotions and residency discounts for these certain hours, while implementing them is a lot different than talking about them. And right now, even our local discount is a really big, this is a bad phrase, but it's a pain point for our front desk staff, because we now have to ID people to get them to swim in our pool. And so we get frustrated guests who come here from different places, and they travel many miles to experience Evans' plunge, and now we are charging them a different rate, and it is a black-and-white decision when they're going to give us their money. So definitely something to talk about with the director, to get that ground-level input that you wouldn't necessarily consider in a meeting atmosphere like that, because that should weigh in on your decision-making. So I'd encourage it, too. My list is lengthy, but the audience is dwindling, so I'm gonna just cut it down some. Evans' Plunge, you do have that plunge and rating program. If you're not familiar with it, check out last week's Hot Springs Star. Southern Hills Golf Course, if you're a golfer or no one, will begin air rating at the golf course, meaning the playability's not gonna be quite as good, but at the same time, we're preparing our course for, you know, longevity for the long term, so air rating's going to begin this September. We also have a new Hot Springs Golf website. It's hotspringssdgolf.com. We had a previous Southern Hills Golf Course website that was not mobile-responsive. It was actually pretty lackluster for how beautiful our course is. So I've done a full, revamped our website, looking at Evans' Plunge's new website and how many people use it on mobile devices. We made the golf course website also mobile-friendly, so it's responsive to phones, to tablets, and to desktops. Evans' Plunge, you know, in the spirit of our veterans community and the upcoming memorial of 9/11, we do have a event that day. It's free admission for military, veterans, and all first responders at Evans' Plunge as a way to say thank you to them, everybody that made the sacrifice and continues to make sacrifices for our safety. Evans' Plunge, we have an anniversary celebration, September 19th, so that's coming up, 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. We'll have a Mewler presentation. We'll also do, cut some cake. We were planning to do membership specials without rates in place. That might change a little bit. We do have door prizes, lots of good giveaways as well to help promote the plunge. Chris, you brought this up, but we have September fitness in the park, every Saturday in September, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. fitness. It starts off with boot camp fitness, goes to zumba, then ends with light yoga, except for the last month, we have belly dancing. And this is entirely free for the public to attend, and we do give out prizes to those who attend. So I encourage you guys, if you're not into it, if you are, please show up, but definitely spread the word to get the public engaged as well. If you've been downtown, we'll see, we have utility work going on in National and Main. That is a water line replacement, so you'll see some road construction there, and there might be some difficulties with traffic if you like to access Golden West from that direction or the Evans. Bear with us, we're making improvements, so that's always a good thing.
No, what number one for that last?
That, I didn't talk with our Public Works Engineer to firm up the specifics, so it's tough for me to give a rough estimate right now, but I can give back to you the better answer. I just don't want to give you the wrong one tonight. We are looking at applying for a USDA Rural Development Assistance for the parks. That's a combination grant and loan. Now, the two projects we've identified with the Parks Committee would be the Brookside Parks and also Butler Park. No commitments will be made prior to the council's approval. We just need to have an application in place to even be considered for this project or for this funding source. That is due by the end of September. We'll also be applying for a Wellmark grant at Evans' Plunge to improve the facility and also promote wellness within our community. That grant deadline is coming up here at the middle of the month. It is a popularity contest, so to speak, so once our application materials are sent to them, they'll post them online, and it's up to the public to then comment and like and upvote. So once it's live, we'll definitely blast it out through social media. We'll put it, post it there on site. We'll also send it to our email marketing campaign subscribers, so that way people get out the votes, so to speak, to support Evans' Plunge and our grants, grant searches. And lastly, and I guarantee this is lastly, the Mueller Center will be offering a Throwback Thursday movie series this winter. It'll be right here in this auditorium. Every third Thursday of the month, we'll show vintage films. A lot of these are in the public domain, so they're free to the city to show. We're talking about, think of Halloween movies, like, at the list here in front of me. House on Haunted Hill, I think it's gonna be one, it's a double feature for Halloween. Come December, we'll offer one, It's a Wonderful Life, so definitely a Christmas classic there. And then in January, we're gonna show The Glenn Miller Story to kind of get the public in Hot Springs geared up for The Glenn Miller Orchestra coming in April. And that is all I have.
Can I still add a question? I've asked you, if you've talked to Roy, that he manages the theater here, and just, he is a local business, and he does show movies and does the theater. Have you discussed this with him?
We'd like to...
I don't want to be in, you need to get in touch with him.
Try our best.
He needs... How about a letter? He probably would get that if you, it's just we're competing, are we competing with a local business? And I've been asking you this for months, you know, when you started the movies in the park.
I would certainly set him a letter. I just didn't, you know, thought a return call would be a good start. But to give some assuriness, the movies we're showing are 1950's titles.
I just think it would be a courtesy to call him.
It's a good courtesy, yes. We will do, it's further steps to be contacted.
Thank you.
If anyone has a, oh, we have tried it all once, so.
So I have two minutes, two-minute warning. I'll be very quick. I won't repeat anything that was already stated, except for, again, the Patriot Day on Friday. I do encourage people to support that. Master Plan is still in progress. I won't go into long details there, but we're gonna have a main meeting on the 29th. With that, the other thing I really want to make sure you're aware of, and council is, tomorrow is Cindy Messenger-Taylor's last day at the library. There's an open house for her there. We will be surprising her with a proclamation, so I encourage you to come out and support her. It's like 4 to...
Or 7.
7. I'm gonna probably be there about 5-ish, so just encourage you to participate in that as well. Nolan touched on it, National and Main Street, which is around the Red Rock River Resort, and Evans is going to be tore up. It's a project that's nine years in the, in the making, so it is gonna be a difficult situation. But Brad, I wanted to give you the opportunity to introduce your new colleague. Can we do that?
Sure. Seth John, the owner, comes down from the property market building. You can read more on him tomorrow, sir.
Oh. Selling papers. But welcome to the community, John. It's not always this easy. And it's usually, we talk about the plunge, even more passionate sometimes. And it's usually, we talk about the plunge, even more passionate sometimes, so, thank you for surviving your first meeting with us, I'm welcome, again. Again, I had a few other things, but I think they've all been said, and I know it's late, so, thank you for coming, especially thank you to the council, and of course, to the plunge advisory, I'm, I'm sorry, that's just not up to my act of break, it was passed before by the council, so, I, I would love to see a plan to support our swim team. Thank you, and good night.
Motion to adjourn.
I'm sorry?
Motion to adjourn.